Thank you for coming, Armand.
Yeah, sorry, I was like, got stuck in traffic.
All right. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the April 3 meeting.
So move.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Both approve.
Yeah.
Motion passed. Discussion regarding the Fair Rent Commission.
You want me to?
Yes.
Eventually, we received a number of comments by Tom Candifer, which were very thoughtful, as usual. My thought, and my thought is that, as I looked at them, I think we're gonna get a lot more questions. He raises, he raises some good thoughts, some of which we already addressed. On the other hand, I think we're gonna end up getting, getting more of these suggestions. And my, I'm thinking that maybe we just hold his suggestions in abeyance until we do have, you know, prior to a vote, but we do have, do we have a public hearing on the Fair Rent? Yeah, I guess we did, didn't we?
No, we didn't have a public hearing yet.
We're gonna schedule. So I guess my point is, why don't we, why don't we schedule it and then see what comes out of the public hearing?
When is that made?
It will be May.
May 15th.
May 15th, I guess if you vote on that. And then, at that point, we can take into consideration some of Tom's suggestions, plus whatever else we end up learning from the public hearing.
Yep.
But we did make some changes to the Fair Rent Commission already, to the draft that I supplied. And I think you have what says now Fair Rent Commission Revised for 1223. So that's, those are the changes that we agreed to make the last time we met. I don't know if you, mine and my sheet, it's highlighted them, but.
They're red online.
Are they red? Okay, so somehow you can see what the changes were. And so I would say maybe schedule the public hearing and then, rather than try to make changes now, especially since you don't have a full committee.
So can we take one more look at it? And, you know, I know these changes were from our last meeting that we had. So one of the things that Vic was able to add is, in the first section, under B, appointment of members slash ex officio, which took out other members. And then added again, the commission may invite any hearing or investigation as resource, personnel, any city building, fire zoning, blight, and/or other official who will serve as officio without voting privileges. Armand, we comfortable with that?
Yeah, no, I think that expertise is gonna be needed on this. You know, because there'll be allegations, and then you need to make sure the allegations are substantiated by someone who has an expert role.
Or has a function of their.
Yeah, that's their job.
Their job, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, and C, Vic added, you know, members of the Fair Rent Commission shall be appointed for overlapping terms of two years. One person who is a tenant, one person who is a landlord, and two persons who are neither a tenant or landlord shall.
One person.
One person.
Of each, right?
Yeah, one of each.
One of each, but I might have read, I'm reading it as it's written in here. So if we need to change.
One person is a tenant, one person is a landlord, and two persons, oh yeah, two persons.
And two persons who are neither a tenant or a landlord.
Oh, I did, yeah, I just didn't highlight it on mine. Okay, yeah, you're right.
And they shall serve an initial term of one year. And then one person who is a tenant, one person who is a landlord, and one person who is neither a tenant or landlord shall serve an initial term of two years. Is that repetitive?
Yeah, it seems like it's repetitive.
I think you're having an overlapping term, right?
No, actually, it's two different, it says two different things. The top one says two neither landlord or tenant, and the bottom, the underneath says one who's neither, only a tenant or a landlord.
Yeah, the first, the first one that you read where it says, one person who's a landlord, a tenant.
Yeah.
One person who's a landlord, and two who are neither a tenant or a landlord, shall serve an initial term of one year.
Right.
So that's one thing. And then, there's gonna be one person who is a tenant, one who's a landlord, and one who is neither a tenant or a landlord. They will serve an initial term of two years.
Okay, I see.
That's how you get your overlap.
Right.
Okay, so, so there's.
Thereafter, each person shall serve a term of two years.
Is that clear?
So that gives you your seven.
Yeah, yeah.
That's seven, but you've got, so the first time you create the commission.
Yeah. How about, how about if you put in there initially, something to that effect, right?
It said shall serve an initial term.
Okay.
Of one year.
Yeah, okay. One person who is, okay, shall sue two years.
Initial term of two years.
Right.
So you get your overlap that way.
Right.
Thereafter, each member shall serve a term of two years. So every time you have an election.
Well, it's not an election, aren't they appointed?
Or appointment, whatever.
Whatever it is.
It'll be for two years.
Yeah, so you're not appointing all seven in the same year.
Exactly.
So you have some experience on the commission.
Okay.
Essentially, right?
Yeah.
Is that what?
The more I'm.
If you could think of another way to say.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Yeah. No, now, now, I, it's clear now. It doesn't mean that it's not gonna be clear to other people.
Changes on the Fair Rent Commission, and we're on. Yeah. Let me see. So because we're just starting this commission, Vic was able to add, it's probably not in red view, but it's almost there. Yeah, so we're, oh no, I think, sorry.
Some first page.
Yeah, so it's this section right here, we're just talking about. The other two sections, Armand and I agree are good, because
That's B.
In B, we added that sentence where it's, yours isn't red, but this, that's lighter, is the red on here, but it's, you know, they can invite to the hearing other city departments, people who are expertise, so the commission can ask questions if they need to, to those people who have it as a function of their job. That makes sense. And then C, he added the first time, one person is a tenant, I'll let you read it.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we, we just wanna make sure it's clear, because there's, it's an overlapping term of two years.
And it's just be, it's, it's new, so you have to have, so that's how it has to be worded the first time.
It's gonna be staggered again.
Yeah. I would like to put it in.
Could you say, or can I speak?
Yeah, of course.
Could you say something like, initially, initially, four persons, one of which is a tenant, one is a landlord, two are non-tenants or whatever, shall serve an initial term of one year.
We said that in a different order.
Just trying to see if there's a better, clearer.
Yeah. Yeah, however you, yeah, whatever you think.
No, I, yeah.
Yeah, this is, that, yeah, this is, it, it's pretty clear, once you understand why it's like that. It's clear, because you wanna make a paragraph, another paragraph? Would that clarify it if you? I think, I think too many words is dangerous, too. It's, it makes it, or it makes it more confusing, so.
But I do think, to your point, so if you say members of the Fair Rent Commission shall be appointed for overlapping terms of two years, maybe that's where, maybe instead of putting the initial, at the end of that sentence, maybe put it as an initial term of one year. One person who is, will be a tenant, one person who is a landlord, maybe put the initial in the beginning of that.
But you gotta make it clear it's only for one year.
Right, right.
Yeah. Or one year term.
Okay, I think, you know, the one who needs to understand this is the mayor, because she does the appointments for the commission. Okay, Heather.
I mean, I can fool around with it.
Carol are the ones that tell the mayor who's
Well, you understand it? You do?
Okay, so you.
Yeah.
Okay. And when she needs to do the appointments.
Well, since you say thereafter, right, use the word thereafter.
Yeah.
Then you should proceed that with initially, right? Isn't that kind of a raise going? So initially thereafter.
Initially, this is the first paragraph.
And then thereafter.
And thereafter.
Yeah, initially, for the purpose of establishing a staggered term rule.
I almost like it, just.
Yeah.
You know, in the, in the effort to establish a, what did you say?
Staggered term.
Staggered term.
For the purpose of, initially, for the purpose of establishing a staggered term rule, thereafter.
Yeah.
And underline each of those, initially, and underline thereafter. Let me, let me.
Okay, thank you. All right. We are hoping to vote at the ordinance committee to ask the mayor to set, and to put on the agenda, public hearing for May 15, so. All right. Well, we decided to make it
Please strike that from the record.
Simple, you're on, you're on.
I know, it will be adus officially.
Yeah, I mean, it's a difference.
You never know.
I'm not. All right, so D, we didn't change E and F. Are we good with those? There were no changes from the last meeting.
Those are definition.
Yeah. Okay, complaint investigators. So within 14 days after the establishment of the Fair Rent Commission, the mayor shall appoint up to three persons. Oh, I think we added up to, right, up to three persons. So I think we just need to take out one of those threes.
Oh, there's two threes.
Yeah.
Yep.
To serve as complaint investigators. The investigator shall serve for a term of one year and may be reappointed by the mayor. An investigator may be a city employee.
Yeah, we think we had a discussion as to, you know, were we talking about, like, the building department this morning? Do you even wanna make clear that that's really who we're, we're talking about?
I don't think you could ask, you know, a city volunteer, a servant of the city.
Right.
To really do an investigation.
Sure.
It has to be a paid employee, so I don't, I know. Do we want mayor, do we want shall be a city employee?
Well, you could do either one, the statute doesn't necessarily.
So the statute doesn't say that you have to have, they have to be an employee, they could be.
Right.
A paid, okay, so they could be contracted out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so like, so like, I guess, an instance, if, if there's some sort of specialty investigation in some sort of structural area, and you need a high-level person, some sort of engineer that has certain certifications, then you would have to call the man.
And you might have to hire somebody.
You know, so you would have to hire someone out, probably, for something like that.
So an investigator may be a city employee or a subcontractor.
Or a subcontractor.
I mean, you could just think about what it's taking to build a new school. I mean, you got a lot of people that are, you know, being hired to do stuff that don't work for the city. And these will all be paid positions?
I would assume an investigator, if it gets to this far as a complaint, you know, this is only if there's a complaint.
Yeah.
So, and that there.
Let's assume there's a fair amount of complaints.
But you know, I, you know, Vic and I, we had talked about that in other cities that have had Fair Rent Commission, that really hasn't been.
Really?
They've come to some resolution.
Okay.
So I wouldn't think this is fairly.
There's gonna be a lot of trial and error.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
You might wanna change it quickly afterwards, you never know.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's always our purview.
Can we add that, the investigator may be a city employee or a subcontractor, or contractor of the city?
Yeah, or a contractor of the city, maybe do that, or a contractor of the city.
Maybe a city employee or contractor?
Or contractor.
Or contract employee.
City or contract employee. Yeah, 'cause I just think that there may arise a situation where you need an expert, like someone who, the city does not have on staff.
Yep.
Yeah, I know.
Can do that.
So in my world, we used to do abuse and the black investigations, and sometimes the agency themselves could do the investigation, but if it's complicated, we contracted out. So that there wasn't any risk of, you know, the person who the complaint was against, you know, would come back at the agency. So it's, it's fairly common to contract out if it's a complicated issue.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
So it's city or contract employee.
Yeah, I got it, yep.
All right, so I think the only thing in B that we added was investigation to any hearing officer or.
Put the or in there, yeah.
Okay, all right. Investigation report shall be submitted in writing to each hearing officer before a Fair Rent Commission hearing or orally of commission meeting. The complaint, any objection, although we didn't do any changes to that.
I had a question.
Yes.
Before we move off this.
Yeah.
Just getting back to the money issue of this. What do, do we anticipate there's gonna be union questions? This, these are not gonna be city employees. Well, but we're saying that they.
Well, the contract might be.
Yeah, and is there already, you've gotta open the door to some union contract issues and things. Well, let's, I'm not saying that, but if it feeds it, I'm just trying to anticipate what that may lead.
I'm thinking it's more of the, within their job purview. So like, a fire marshal would look at, if someone complains that there's all these violations, it's unsafe, because it's, it's a fire issue. So the fire marshal would investigate, that's their job, right?
That's my feeling, that is my feeling.
Yeah, that, that's your job, and then, you know, if it's.
This is not something in addition to.
You know, they say it's an electrical thing, that it would be the building inspector.
As long as, yeah, as long as we are sort of in the same mind, going forward at least, until we're challenged.
Look at, look at him over there, smiling ahead of.
You're thinking, so you're thinking that we're increasing the workload? Well, I, I think as soon as, as soon as.
Yeah, they could say that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that will pop up.
That's always, I mean, there's always that question.
Right.
We run into that all the time. But you have to then determine at the time whether that is really part of their job description or not. And I think. We're gonna put some verbiage in here. I wouldn't, no, no, I wouldn't touch that.
Be clear, unless.
No, no, but just, just to sort of, just to sort of skew things later, investigator may be a city employee. If the situation, if the situation arises where their expertise would be required. Kevin Gillette from the building department was up at the high school all day today.
Yeah.
There's nothing in his job description that he had.
Okay, all right, then.
You know, so, yeah, I wouldn't, okay, I wouldn't fool around.
Okay, then, fine. I mean, if it becomes, there's many, many, many complaints, and then it might turn into workload issue, possibly, but that, that's a wait and see.
Yeah, okay. All right, I think we're okay.
A potential way you could address that, should it arise, because I would suspect that it will arise.
Well, if there's a lot of them.
Yeah, and that, well, if it's kinda, you know, what are you investigating, right? You're the fire marshal, you're investigating, you know, causes of fires, what, right? If you're investigating a complaint that a landlord is not charging fair rent.
Well, that's not what you'd need there, right?
So I don't, you know, if it's.
That wouldn't be a city employee.
Right, right, so you'd hire somebody else to do that.
Right, yeah.
I would imagine it'd be a realtor or something, that's one of the reasons why I said to the mayor.
Or a real estate attorney or something like that.
Yeah, I think whoever she appoints in one of the, on this commission should be somebody who is in this field, you know? Especially the two that are not a tenant or a landlord.
You could take as an example, for instance, the blight ordinance, which is not that old. And the blight ordinance carries with it similar provisions where the fire marshal checks it out.
Right.
The building inspector has certain obligations.
You're in the, you're guys are down there.
In the previous paragraph, you could pull from city resources to augment an investigation if that's necessary.
So I don't, I don't think it's a problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I think it's worth bringing up and having a conversation about. All right, complaint and hearing procedure. Vic was able to add, during the investigation, the rent in the question shall be continued until a final decision by the commission. So it's the rent that was established, you know, with whatever agreement they had with. Good with that? Okay, didn't make any changes. So we come to E. Test more, testimony before the Fair Rent Commission shall be under oath and a verbatim tape recording of each hearing be preserved in accordance with state. I think we need to keep policy in there, or state.
No, I think that's correct, there was, it should say state statute.
State statute.
Yeah, we took out town policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
So Heather, you got that change, right? All right. Then F, Fair Rent Commission shall provide the services of an interpreter whenever needed. Should we put at the cost of which, or we're, how about when needed period, the cost of which will be paid by the person requesting?
So just put a period after needed?
I would think, yeah, and then to the cost of which I'll pay by the person requesting the interpreter.
Okay. Yeah, I'm fine, absolutely. Well, then you have to, it's not a complete sentence, though.
Okay.
You'd have to say the cost of the interpreter shall be paid by the person. And the, and the cost of this interpreter shall be paid by the person.
Yeah.
By the requesting party.
Yeah.
Right, 'cause it. Tenant or the land.
Correct. And there's, and there's nothing in the statute where one would have to be provided.
Right.
Just wanna make sure we're covered on that.
Yeah, all right. Um, so what I'd like to do, I'd like to have a motion to approve the ordinance as revised.
I wanna, before we do that, maybe just for Paul's certification, Paul, I don't know if you saw Tom, Tom Candifer?
Yes.
His things, no, I didn't have to see that. Yeah, well, he brought, he sent in some suggestions, and they're, you know, they're reasonable. But I'm, before you got here, I was saying, why don't we just hold those in abeyance until after the public hearing, then we can incorporate.
I, I agree, whatever he says.
Those are the same stat, have the same status.
Yeah, okay.
I agree completely.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was.
Heather can read them into the.
Yeah.
Procedures.
Sure.
Yeah.
Be true enough.
Okay.
I just have a thought, a public hearing, is there any way that we can get the Fair Rent Commission translated into Spanish? Since we do have a lot of Spanish-speaking people that are registered? Just a thought.
Well, the, and I'm not gonna necessarily volunteer him, but Rist's assistant, Richard, does, can do that, he did a letter for me. Translated it, I don't know if he wants to.
So the worry I have is, we don't have any of the other ordinances.
Correct.
You know, in anything other than English. If we were to tackle this and be consistent, and I respectfully, Heather, you're making a really good point. But I think once the ordinance is approved, if we wanna do it in Spanish, I just, I think we're setting a precedent that is pretty dangerous, because it's also a very.
Yeah. At the end of version enough, it's not.
You could translate anything with Google Doc, you just put in Google Doc and just translate, you know, translate it, whatever like you want.
Beautiful thing, yeah.
You know, so, I mean, there, there are lots of tools out there that.
Well, but what I learned with regard to translations, is that for somebody like me, if I'm handed a letter to say, this is the Spanish version of your letter, I don't know that that's.
Right, 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 right.
And so there are certified
Correct.
translators.
Right, right, right.
Richard is one of them.
Yeah.
But it's, yeah, I think he is certified.
Yeah, but if, if somebody wanted to copy the ordinance off the, off the website and put it into a Google Doc.
You'll get, you'll get.
They can get the general list of it, and then they can ask questions from there. And that, you know, I'm just saying that there's a lot of tools out there to get a lot of information. So, because, you know, we have a lot more than just Spanish speakers and Spanish language in this town, so.
So I would like to have a motion to approve the ordinance, just approval from our committee, and set a public hearing for May 15.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We're good to go? All right. Next on the agenda is question regarding solid waste ordinance. So we did already have a public hearing on that. There will, we made, were there any changes that you were recommending at this point?
No, there was, I made no changes since the public hearing, you know, based upon looking out, you know, what I heard and what the ordinance committee may or may not want to do. Basically, you know, I heard that the state is in a lot of flux, there's state statutes pending legislation. You know, there's, you know, there's discussion on organics recycling becoming mandatory, but potentially being delayed. Not, you know, that municipalities have to do mandatory organics recycling, but may not come till 2028 or 2030. So, you know, do we continue, do we wait and, for our legislation to wait on the state to craft their final legislation? I think we know that the state is one in crisis and that, you know, there's a lot of things being thrown out there. The state is really pushing organic recycling. But, and the statute may get some more traction, which I think it will. But the requirement communities to do it may not be till 2028 or 2030.
Yeah.
Depending on, you know, that timeline. So I, that was a takeaway that I got, was, you know, the state legislation regarding solid waste and recycling and organics and styrofoams is changing. Continuously. Do we continue to wait before we change our legislation?
Some of the comments, oh, go ahead.
Well, I would like to respond to you.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I agree completely that we should factor in the state in our decision to, to move anything forward. Okay, I've seen way, way too, we all have seen way too many instances, to your point. And I think, trying to think of how to, how to best do this, but I think it would be, and again, you know me, I get, I tend to get aggressive in trying to push the state to do things that they tend to drag their feet on. They've had a long, this problem has been, this problem has been, you know, on the radar for a long, long damn time. And it absolutely, positively, I was thinking about this over the weekend, you know? I don't wanna be, make a speech, but it, it is to the point of what does, what is the purpose of government, going all the way back to Lincoln, government should do only those things that people can't do better for themselves. Oh, I don't want to be, make a speech, but it, it is to the point of what does, what is the purpose of government, going all the way back to Lincoln, government should do only those things that people can't do better for themselves. This is by, this is the exact definition of what government needs to get involved in, certainly at the state level, giving guidance. It's a statewide problem, it's a national problem, certainly overwhelmingly a northeastern problem because of this, you know, ultimately, you know, the, you know. Where, where this stuff is, is shipped to, et cetera, et cetera. And we need, I think we need to, I don't think we should be doing this in a vacuum, in a bubble, outside of alert, literally, literally as a city council. And these, as a municipality, alerting the state to, hey. We need some sort of guidelines for when you think some set of requirements are going to be passed. So we have a window to operate in, you should be able to deliver that, and we should be able to go to our elected officials and say. Give us some kind of reliable window. I mean, is it eight years out, five years out, or is it two? Are there things that you are discussing now in Hartford that are only two years out and we should factor that into what we want to do? I would love to get our, they, I think they owe us that, to get sit here and tell us where the state is on making. Some sort of progress on this problem that will affect what our ordinance, because every, all of these cities, we cannot keep doing this and twisting and turning. Our ordinances and our, and our work procedures for our citizens in a responsible way. Which is what will happen if we don't get some kind of realistic guidance. They don't want to do, they don't want to commit to things, well, you know. I, I think it's our responsibility as elected officials to represent Toronton and, and Litchfield County for that matter, as, as, you know, as the largest municipality, the micro polity of Litchfield County, to say, no, you owe us more. And, and I would like the council to take that position, you know.
So the only, I mean, we have an existing ordinance, which is in the back of this. I thought what we were trying to do is. Is just update it, you know, I, I don't think, you know, to be honest with you, I, I agree, I think there's a lot more. Regulations that are going to come down, you know, through the state, but when are they going to come? I mean, there is, there are some things that are in here that aren't related to. Well, we got shopping carts in here, you know. Which we need to address, you know, as, as a local issue.
Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm fine with, with our ordinance adjusting to those.
Yeah, so I think what, what I felt Ray was trying to do is not get too deep in the.
Yeah.
In the revisions, as, you know, maybe, maybe we, I mean, because you're a section on recyclable and combustible or compostable materials. Maybe we. Don't include those, that section, or, you know, until this comes down, but I don't know, what.
Maybe you can follow on, on, on your lead, because those things, those things that may, that, that may. Cause a delay that the state may be themselves chewing on to give us direction. Maybe we don't move on those in this ordinance, and we direct, we specifically ask our state representatives to talk to those. Can you give us any kind of guidance as to when you might be coming up to a, is it, again, is it, is it two years, five years, 10 years? So, and then we move on, we adjust to whatever they tell us, you know.
You know. Well, what, yeah, I agree with that, and, you know, you look at your ordinance and what changes in this state statutes, can that be addressed via regulations versus an ordinance change? You know, if your ordinance language is, shall comply with CGS.
Which is.
Seven dash one forty-six as amended. You know, then maybe have to adjust that in your rules and regulations.
Yeah.
Some of the things that are on, that they're working on is EPR for tires, having the producers being responsible for environmentally. Tires, it's EPR for packaging. You know, we obviously know there's an excessive packaging, you know, and then trying to make the producers responsible for that. Organics, organics is probably the hottest, biggest topic, well, one, because it, it has the most. Opportunity to reduce the cost. To the residents.
Yeah.
But in our meeting last week, we, Linda and I sat in with CCM and there were somewhere in the range of. Seventies uptown officials from across the state. And that's where, you know, they're pushing for legislation to mandate organic recycling, but not likely going to occur. Potentially till 2028 or 2030. You never know. You know, being very familiar with the legislature is.
Because we don't address anything about organic.
Yeah.
In our ordinance.
Other than that recycling is mandatory. Now, what we did with it, or, you know, knowing that we knew to address it at some point. Is we put language in there defining what it is. That, that was, is an attempt just to bring awareness to it, and we've had conversations that 25 to 30% of the weight of your trash is organics and. Since you pay by the ton, you could do that math. So. Do we need to be in sync with the state?
But.
And what the state's doing, I, absolutely, I think that is, is prudent on our part.
Yeah.
But can we wait for the state?
Right, so, yeah, because that's something we can do on our own, especially if it's going to be a cost savings. We should be attempting to do it as long as we could, it, it at least saves us money.
Right, and so one of the things.
We should just do that automatically. We don't need an ordinance for that.
Right, so we tried the I recycle, unfortunately, he hasn't been able to get enough members to really get that program going. So we're also, now we're looking at. A voluntary organics recycle. So. We can put the recycling dumpsters, advertise it, put it out to the community, and that, have kits that.
Is that what you're selling and selling those or something?
Yeah, so they're like 20 bucks for a kit, it gives you, you know, 100 compostable, because you got to use compostable bags. And as a voluntary sort of. Fourier into that. They can go to these, you know, we can have one or maybe a couple in the city where you can take your compostable bags and. Put them in a dumpster or a toter and, and then. That weight comes out of your MSW. And then it goes, you know, I mean, you, you, you do pay for tonnage, but. The only one now, the intero digester is bio power, quantum bio power in Southington. But that's $45 a ton.
Versus.
Versus, uh, right, currently we're paying $105 a ton.
But you're, so, I noticed in the paper, and I didn't know this, but you're selling those possible.
So we're not, so we're not, we're sponsoring.
Sponsoring.
So we're sponsoring the rain barrel and compost bins.
Right.
The residents sign up for it, we're sponsoring it, we're advertising it.
That's the voluntary piece.
But it's a voluntary piece, it's, you go online, we've, we've done the compost, compost bins in Toronton previously.
So where do they bring them after they fill them?
Well, these are backyard composters.
Oh, okay.
So I actually had one, I bought it when Toronton had their, I still use it.
I have, I have one.
What do they cost?
I think the compost bins are $79, $69, $79. But residents sign up for it, and then they just get delivered here. We facilitate the distribution and we help businesses. So we're not, we're not doing what we did the last time, we're not buying them and then trying to sell them.
Right.
We're just being a sponsor for this role, kind of rollout, so to speak.
So we're getting off track here, I think I can take you off track easily, but. But this old ordinance hasn't been revised since 2010, so it's been 13 years. I think the intent was to try and to bring it up to date, we had a few more opportunities to save money on behalf of the city to. Add more rules, unfortunately, in terms of recycling and. I, I just feel like we need to do something, you know, and not wait for the state, you know, and when the state.
No, but I, I, I was saying, are there things in here that we can break out?
Yeah, okay.
And, and not, and not sort of pass tonight, or recommend to pass tonight. You know, just things that are specifically local, yeah, absolutely, let's get it done and, and move on. But there are things that, where there's a question mark of what is the state's timeline, how might that impact us? Would it serve us to have a representative from the state sit to, you know, and, and, and again. My, my approach being, send a message that the city council wants, this city wants some, some answers soon, you know. Hopefully it'll get written up as the city is pushing the state to come up with some, some answers on these things.
No, I, I totally agree, and possibly what we can do, because we, we already passed it through this committee, had the public hearing.
It's tabled, right?
And we did not.
Tabled as long as you.
Right, right, right. Right.
Yeah.
So I think what, what you're asking is whether or not there are anything in here that we might be able to extract.
Are, are there things that you, in here, Ray, that you think would be best if we, if we got some guidance from the state, if possible, or not? And, and if you don't think, if you think that's just a waste of time, then I find.
I mean, I, I don't know that there's, I don't think there's anything in there that.
We're going to get.
Is that onerous, that we're going to find, this, the state's going to move anything on.
Okay.
I, I think from our perspective, we were looking to update it, we were looking to add more definitions. We, you know, Article Three is really a reiteration of. A lot of, that was not included in the ordinance, which makes man, recycling mandatory. Because we get contaminated bins all the time, and. There's the wrong materials in there, then that becomes contaminated versus $45 a ton versus $105 a ton. It was just a way of trying to get that message out, I mean, we're, we're going to be putting stickers on everybody's blue bin and tell you what to recycle.
Okay.
So, you know, it's looking, and trying to bring it more to the forefront. As opposed to, we have this ordinance, and the best thing about what we've gone through the process is bringing awareness to it and people understand.
Right.
And people getting to the point where you got to realize, as you stated. The state, the country is in crisis when it comes to trash, we just produce way too much trash, you know, to deal with. Are there ways, you know, it's, it's, you know, reuse, recycle, repurpose? You know, there's, there's. Communities that have ordinances on, so if, uh, somebody comes into building, they want to demo a building. Well, they have ordinances that they have to then go in, and that building, anything that's salvageable. Has to be removed and recycled. We're not addressing that in this order, we didn't do that, but. And laying the groundwork for organic recycling, trying to bring it to the forefront, our step into it was to do a voluntary programs. I think most people are not going to see their experience with solid waste change other than more messaging. They're not going to really see a huge change in how it affects them on a day-to-day basis.
And I, I think that's, you know. So you, I think what you did in terms of introducing even, you know, getting a permit, you know, for both ways. You know, you could do the same thing for whatever is coming down from the state, do it outside of the ordinance in terms of opportunities for people. Similar to what you're sponsoring in terms of the rain barrels and the compost bins.
Right.
But I, I think we have to focus on this, it gives.
I'm, I'm fine with it, let's move forward. I was, I was hearing, I thought, I thought I was hearing that on the compost issue, the state was going to come in with some guidelines that might completely blow this up, that's what I thought I heard.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see that happening. I think from that perspective, my take was, I mean, there were comments in regards to clothing bins. You know, what do we do with clothing bins? We've, in engineering has received a couple of complaints about. Clothing bins, technically, if it's put there, it meets the definition, the state definition of dumping. Is that something that we want to do in the ordinance, or is it, we handle it a different way? Do you, I don't, you think you want the ordinance to get overly wielding?
No, 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 no.
So. Our discussion today was about if there were any changes that.
There were no changes that I made based upon the public hearing. Because I just said, okay, what, this is what I heard, I heard about, you know, we don't put it out there long enough, you know, we don't advertise it.
Right. So let's.
And that we should delay it because of state mandates, I heard about the donation bins, and then I heard that the shopping cart. Part was potentially too vulnerable for retail.
Right, yeah, those are the three, the shopping carts were one, donation bins, and basically the dumping.
Right, so it was like, I wasn't, I didn't. Fourier in for, into the changes until I had some guidance from. You folks as to where you wanted to go, was there anything that you wanted to address?
I, I think the, you know, the comments I heard, I mean, we have, you know, sort of the repercussions of shopping carts on this thing, and then I think we addressed that one here. I think what comments I remember hearing from the public was that. A lot of businesses aren't aware that this ordinance is coming down, you know. And, you know, whether or not we could do better, you know, before we actually put this to the council to vote. If we could do better in terms of communicating to the business community about shopping carts. I went into TJ Maxx, I talked to the manager on duty, he said, you should go on the Toronton website, call Heather. You know, to really, at, at some point really understand that there'd be repercussions, they don't have any locks or anything on there, it seems like that.
There's ones that we, we do see actually quite often. There's, there's.
There's a bunch of them in the river, I saw the other day, I was not happy, so. Anyway, we got to get this through so that we can start addressing. So we, we have no vote from the ordinance made tonight, other than we can recommend, you know, the mayor to put it on the agenda.
Strong.
For a vote, not tonight, but for possibly May 15.
Yeah, yeah, for the next meeting.
All right, is there any other business from the county members? I only have one, which for the record, I want to see if we can start looking at ordinances that we can take off of the books. A little bit with Sergeant.
Bald.
Baldis about, you know, start looking at some of the ordinances that really have no.
They're not relevant.
No value or no relevance to this day and age, so he laughed and he said, oh, I can. So I asked them to do that, because to be, if we're starting to put more ordinances in, let's start taking them out, I've always felt that about. All right, I have the motion to adjourn.
So, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moved, moved and passed. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It's 33. So I'd like to call this a regular meeting of the city council and WPCA to order, today is Monday, May 1st, 2023. And participating in person here at the City Hall Auditorium.
Oh, here.
I have Councilman Cabanero, Councilwoman Rowett, I have Councilman Manichia, Councilwoman Hona, participating via Zoom, I have. Councilman Oliver and Councilman Walden, so that is a full council, before we begin the agenda, could we please stand and touch the flag?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll jump into item number one, I would entertain a motion to open the meeting to the public in accordance with section four. subsection E of the city council WPCA meeting rules of procedure. Thank you, Councilwoman Hona, second by Councilman Cavanero. All in favor? Any opposed? Is there anyone from the public that wishes to address the council at this time? Seeing and hearing, oh, anybody wishing to address the council at this time?
This is your time.
This is it, come on up. We're gonna go looking for you. Yeah, so if you would just state your name for the record?
Sure. I'm Brent Hawkins, this is my wife, Mary Hawkins. We live at twenty-six Lotten Street here in beautiful downtown Torrington. And we are here about a light nuisance problem. There isn't an ordinance apparently to deal with this, so maybe we could create one because it's causing us a nightmare, I mean, a nightmare, because it's, yeah, I know, sorry, couldn't help myself. Anyway, the, she can tell you all about it. She's well-versed in all the ins and outs.
That's why we're not sure where to go next. We went through the, we, we made a complaint through the city, through the zoning. They said they did everything they could. There's not really an ordinance for residential, whereas commercial, there was a problem, they fixed it instantly. So, um, we have a neighbor who moved in and apparently the ordinance states that he did everything he could and they're gonna just drop it. So they, they, so we're here today to see what more we can do. This light shines a hundred and twenty-five feet through our whole property. It also shines through our whole living area. It's on twenty-four, actually it's not twenty-four seven. It's on, you know, motion light for, for sensor of daylight day and night. So, so every time we're in a room, the light comes on, we turn, we have to immediately shut our blinds. It's in our bedroom, it's through our house, it's on constantly. The one in the front, we're putting another addition on, but we can't figure out our lights outside because it is so bright. So how do you, how do you exist in your own home, you know? It, it's a nuisance, it's mental, this is affecting me. We can't even, we have a beautiful home. We put the addition on, we put a hot tub in, we did everything right. And now we can't enjoy any part of our home. We have one of the largest lots down at the south end and we're proud of it. We love where we live. And we have a neighbor who has a light on the third floor of his house. That's, that is shielded, however, he's never out back, he has cameras everywhere, he has no shades on his windows. So it's like, why are we bombarded with light when he has no shades on his? What is he trying to see? I don't understand who he is, I don't want to understand who he is. But this is affecting us and I think maybe an ordinance for residential, because our houses are so close, should be addressed, especially the world we live in now, because you can't go home. You, you forgot to shut your blinds, why would you shut your blinds when you leave the house in the morning? But we shouldn't have to live like this. We have sent many pictures to, with our complaint, video at four-thirty in the morning, the birds are coming up, but our blinds were shut. It's quite sad, it's unnerving, it's, it's affecting.
We sent timestamped photos and videos to the blight officer who is Nate Nardi Cyrus, he did what he could.
So here we are, addressing the fact that, you know, if you're at dinner, it's interrupted. You know, you're out in your hot tub, it's interrupted. We love our privacy, we've done a lot to our home, we've done everything right. And now we can't enjoy any outside, even in our bedroom.
Yeah.
You know, the windows, what happens when the summer, I mean, it's beautiful, you open your windows, you have to what, shut your blind? It's very uncomfortable.
I mean.
And scary at the same time.
He did what he could, but there needs to be more done in this case.
The complaint went to Nate, who is our zoning enforcement officer. So from a zoning regulation perspective, there is nothing in the regulations that will help dictate or give any enforcement. So this board does not engage in a conversation with public speaking. But what we can do is we can hear your complaint or your concern. I can take it to the right department heads, figure out what the recommendation is, and then bring back something to the council at the next meeting or the meeting after that, just to give us a little time to look at what are the best options in this. I know lights, lights and lighting are really sensitive topics. And I can only imagine how difficult it is to deal with this.
And so what should we do on our part? Should we follow up? Should we go to a meeting?
I think you tried to call my office earlier today.
I did, I did talk to Moret.
Yes, yeah, so what I'll do is I'll take this, if the council will afford me this opportunity, back to both our planning officers. And we'll take a look at, with the corporation council, if there are any ordinances out there in other municipalities that might provide some insight on what other municipalities are doing about this. But you're right, in this day and age, when you can have motion detector lights, motion detection lights, it's hard to imagine somebody leaving a light on all day like that, but we'll see.
It's supposed to be a motion light, but in the last, I'd say, at least a month to six weeks, it's been on the whole time. Because it used to just come on and off, I mean, it was really bright.
So one thing I want to add, I know we're emotional here and we keep talking, you know? But just, when you're putting out an addition and you're trying to figure out your lights outside and you can't because this is a nuisance, what do you do? So something to think about, I mean, this is, this is huge.
Yeah, the lights are so bright from next door, we can't figure out where to place our outdoor lights on our new addition.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Going forward for us and trying to find the right fit where we need to address.
Absolutely.
We appreciate it very much.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Brent. All right, the floor is still open for public comment. Is there anyone else from the public wishing to address the board? All right, we'll move into item number two. Item two A, I'll entertain a motion to accept the public hearing minutes from April seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
So good.
Second by Councilwoman Manichia. Are there questions or comments on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item two B, I'll entertain a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes from April seventeen, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Councilman Manichia and second by Councilwoman Hona. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item three, I'll entertain a motion on recommendation of the ordinance committee to schedule a public hearing for a fair rent for a fair rent commission to be scheduled May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll move it, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
And second by Councilman Cavanero. Are there questions or comments?
Just a comment we actually meant just before this meeting. And looked at the revisions, you know, that Vic was able to make from our previous meeting. We have received a few comments, you know, from the public, which we will make sure they're on the record for the public hearing on May fifteenth. So I think we're making progress and hopefully we'll have the consensus of the council for a vote on, on either that date or the following. I know there's a deadline, the state has given us a July first. So we're doing our best as an ordinance committee to move this forward.
I appreciate that. Are there other questions or comments before I call the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four. I'll entertain a motion by the city council here in acting as a water pollution control authority to approve the following payments from Fund four ninety sanitary sewer capital improvement for invoice number one four one nine to Yield Industries, eight thousand four hundred fifty dollars. This is for an emergency repair at the Lake Ridge Forest main.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia. And second by Councilwoman Hona. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five. I'll entertain a motion upon the recommendation of the city engineer and the purchasing agent for a vote to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to award, execute and administer a master agreement contract with Yield Industries LLC of Torrington, NJR Construction LLC of Torrington and Leyden Industries LLC of New Haven for various minor road construction related works, as further explained in the city engineer's memo dated May one, twenty twenty-three. Councilman Ruette, and I think I heard Councilman Waldron on the second. And questions? Hearing no questions. I'll call the motion, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to act on behalf of the city to sign a thirty-six month contract with Frontier Communications for S I P trunk service to replace the legacy prime rate interface, that's PRI circuit. The, that will be a month, this will result in a monthly savings of one thousand one hundred seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents to the city as further explained in the Director of Information Technologies memo dated April twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Thank you, Councilwoman Ruette.
Second.
And second by Councilman Cavanero. And are there questions? Hearing none? All in favor? Any opposed? All right, I will need a motion in the affirmative of two-thirds of the board to add a council agenda item to address the ARPA Blight Committee ad hoc lead abatement grant committee's recommendation. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia. And second by Councilman Cavanero. All in favor? Any opposed? All right, so what I'm looking for is, and, and motion to accept the recommendation of the Blight Committee serving as the ad hoc lead abatement grant committee and the Torrington Area Health District to award a twenty thousand dollar grant from the lead abatement grant funds established with the city of Torrington's ARPA funds to Michael and Teresa Billado. They are the owners of sixty-four Maplewood Avenue. And this is being done in accordance with the actions taken by the council on February twenty-first, twenty twenty-three to establish this lead abatement grant program. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilwoman Manichia.
Second.
And second by Councilman Waldron, and questions? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, I'll entertain a motion to accept the Building Department report dated March twenty twenty-three. I heard Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hona and Councilman Cavanero. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight. I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the tax refunds indicated on the list dated May one, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
I heard Councilwoman Ruette, second by Councilwoman Manichia. Are there questions on this motion? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the tax collector and authorize the sewer usage refunds indicated on the list dated May one, twenty twenty-three.
So moved.
Is that what that meant?
Yeah.
All right, motion made by Councilwoman Manichia. Do I have a second? Thank you, Councilman Waldron. Questions on the motion or the list? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Item ten, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by department heads.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron, second by Councilwoman Manichia, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, to the room, Mr. Towsey, anything from the water treatment? Thank you. Mr. Drew, anything about the fix?
Just to kind of dovetail off of some conversations that we had in the ordinance committee on solid waste and recycling. As you know, Linda Orr is our MSW recycling coordinator. And she wanted to bring you up to date on some of the initiatives the, the group has been discussing and kicking around compost bins. And so Linda, if you want to tell the council about what you've been up to.
Good evening, everybody. We've got quite a few things on the table. The one that is actually in processes, we're offering compost bins and rain barrels to residents, and it's not just to the city of Torrington residents, we're also doing it with Harwinton residents. And you live in Goshen or you want to, as long as you will come to the Public Works Garage on May thirteenth, you pay for it and pick it up. It's a company that we're working with that's encouraging backyard composting and of course rain barrels for watering your garden instead of using water. I got a update from Jeff, who is the person in charge of it. And he said, orders are coming in, but he didn't break them down by municipality. He just sent it out to all the municipalities that are engaged and said, orders are coming in, great. So hopefully we get a good response. If not, we'll try it again at a later date and try to get more information out there and more excitement about it. I spoke with USA Halling today. They are very much on board with us putting recycling stickers on the lids of the bins that tell what's in and what's out. They've created one that is in English and Spanish. And then Recycle Connecticut has one that you can do in English or Spanish to assist all of our Spanish-speaking residents. And we're trying to figure out which one would be the better one to go with. Because part of me likes the Recycle Connecticut one, but the other part, it's, I would, it's hard to determine which house would get a Spanish sticker and which house would get an English sticker. And with people moving, it'd be a constant change. So I think we might end up going with USA's that's already in the two languages. We're working, got a plan to expand our recycling center down on Boke Road where the electronics recycling is. The mayor reached out to me last week and mentioned an organics recycling collection site. I have been working with Eric Frederickson from USA Halling to get some information about how that would work. And we would come to you for approval if, if it is something that we're going to do. And then we would have to do a test pilot program to see what kind of response we get. I've also reached out to the schools through Lisa Salani. I have not heard back from her unfortunately yet. I was in contact with CET, which is the Center for Eco-Technology. They do a program in the schools where they separate usable food, recycled containers, organics, trash, and they use the kids as the ambassadors. And it's gotten a lot of great results. Litchfield did a similar program, so I'm waiting to hear back from them to see if we can do a pilot program up at the Torringford School. And that's about it.
I think the only thing that, that I would add to that, ask for, add a little bit, and just so the council has an idea, would the states move towards having distributors of the NIPS provide revenues to the municipalities? Can you report a little bit about what we're doing with that revenue?
Well, right now, the two things, well, the revenue, we've used a portion of that revenue to cover my salary as the recycling coordinator. Ray and I have also discussed using part of that revenue to purchase new recycle bins for our parks where we would have a garbage bin and a recycle bin, instead of just the garbage. instead of just the garbage bin. Apparently, there's a huge problem with people dumping into our garbage cans at the parks because they're just open cans. And we've looked into a closed lid container. I don't think I have the picture of it. I don't think that's one of the ones I don't, I didn't bring tonight. But it is a locking lid so that it would prevent people from stuffing their two-by-fours, their toilets, their stuff that they're not supposed to put in there. And then hopefully, it would also encourage returning the recycling, the nickels, the nickels which also be dimes. And that could also become a revenue stream for the city. If the city is collecting those recycling bottles and cans, we could set up something with Mike from I Recycle and return some of that revenue to the city. The other thing is the stickers would be part of the revenue, would, would be part of that money that we're using to pay for the stickers that would go on the, the recycle bins.
I appreciate your talking a little bit about that. As you can see, what we've been trying to do is make this recycling coordinator, which is what Linda's official title is, as cost neutral as possible to residents of this, of this city. You know, gone are the days where the trash removal system paid a municipality to take our recycled material. We are now paying them to take our recycled material. So source separation is key. When Linda said that I reached out to her, I was in Yorktown Heights for my grandson's baseball game, and there was a voluntary drop-off location for organics. It was locked down. It was pretty much, it was pretty bear-proof.
It's very similar to what they have in Litchfield.
Yes.
And Litchfield has one at their recycling center, very similar.
Knowing that the state wants us to move into an organics collection system, I think it's by Ray, is it twenty twenty-six that they're talking about? To move?
Twenty twenty.
Yeah, they're looking at potentially twenty twenty-eight.
Yeah, twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight would be the
mandated.
The mandated with a pushback.
Right.
Which is the, the meeting I just sat in last week, but they said, you know, twenty twenty-eight would be the, the, the year that they want it, but knowing that they'll probably have to extend it out some.
The, obviously, anything we can do by way of pilot programs or voluntary programs that starts to get people in a mindset, I think, is a really good thing for us. So we're fortunate that Linda has really embraced this role, and any questions for Linda, any anything she's done?
No, I'm ordering my bin as we speak.
Good for you.
Please, yes.
There, there's quite a few different options, but they come with that nice little information wheel of what to use and how to do it. I know.
Definitely doing some online shopping.
I am.
During the council meeting.
You know, I've been wanting to do it, and we've talked about it in ordinance, so I thought it was the opportunity to do it, so I'm.
Great. I wanted to order the rain barrels, and my husband informed me, we don't have gutters on our house.
Councilwoman Hona has a couple.
I wish my, my house is so far away from my garden, I have to work on so much typing for my rain barrel, I have to try to figure out the science of it. Have you seen anywhere, I'm really curious about with organics recycling, what similar municipalities, like are there city settings that have been able to successfully do this? Like I've said before, I mean, I live in just a single-family home, and I'm always fighting the fruit flies when I'm composting in the summer. I'm just wondering how that could possibly be successful in like a three-family house?
That's, that's a big, a big problem. I just sat in on a seminar, webinar regarding comp, not composting, but organic separation in multifamily houses and apartment buildings. And we're lucky here in Torrington that we don't have a lot of apartment buildings, but it's, it's very difficult because of the rodents, the flies, you know? So if you have a, which is why we were hoping to do the pilot program with a more centralized location where you would bring your stuff there, you wouldn't be dealing with that at your house. You know, once a week, once, whatever, once every two weeks, however often your, your little bag gets full, you bring it down to the composting facility. It gets into the, they're, they're talking, we could do the individual bins, like you said, the picture of, or Eric said he could do a four to five-yard dumpster.
That's what I was thinking about, like an apartment outside, a dumpster in the parking lot would be.
Yeah. Yeah, so, you know, I'm, I'm there, there's a lot of information out there. Unfortunately, a lot of it is still in its infancy. There's not, you know, everyone has all these great ideas, but they haven't figured out exactly how to do it yet. So I, I sit in on many, as many of these, you know, educational workshops and webinars that I can, so I can learn a little bit, but they are saying that more affluent communities with single-family homes have a much higher success rate because of, obviously, the dynamics. Municipalities that have, you know, Bridgeport, New Haven, they have, for lack of a better word, tenement buildings, you know, they have the multi, the thirty, forty, fifty unit buildings. It's almost impossible to do it there, just because.
Hearing your organics downstairs would be happy here.
Yeah, so just, you know, just, just the dynamic of it, it's, it, it'll make it more difficult, but I think we're in a better situation here in Torrington because we have fewer, we have a lot of multifamily houses, but we don't have the big huge apartment complexes. So, and again, if we can get the smaller multifamilies, the, the eight and twelve units to put a composting dumpster, organic dumpster, as part of their collection, you could encourage people to do it that way instead of having to go to the central location to drop them off. But for right now, we would be starting with voluntary drop-off. And then if it grows, there, there's a company out there called Blue Earth that you can sign up a subscription, they'll come to your house, and they will take your bin and dump it. And they'll leave you a clean bin if you want to pay the extra for the clean bin, or you just wash your bin out at the end, you know, once they dump it. So there's a lot of things out there. It's just a matter of finding out which one's going to work best for us. But I think right now, to start, I think the voluntary collection site where people could just go and, and drop it off, and they're not going to have to be worrying about the bears and the raccoons and, you know, that kind of stuff. And there's a pledge you have to sign to volunteer with this, that you're not going to put stickers and twist ties and rubber bands, and you're, you're, you're really going to do the right thing, so you won't have the contamination effect. And if you're found to be in violation of it, you, you can't participate anymore, you know, if you can't ruin it for everybody just because you want to cut corners, shall we say? So I was speaking with Jennifer Heaton-Jones from H R R A, and she runs a very successful program down in the Housatonic region. And she gave me wonderful advice and has shared a bunch of information, and she said, the number one thing you have to do is you have to make people pay for the, the bins. Don't give them away free, because if you give them away for free, people are just going to take them, and they're not going to use them for what they're supposed to be used for. So you make them pay and you make them join a club, shall we say, where it's a minimal fee, you know, twenty dollars a year. Fifty dollars, whatever you, whatever the city decides. And then you bring your stuff and you sign this commitment that, yes, you are going to do it the right way. You're going to only put in, you know, your, your, the, the acceptable items. And there won't be paper, there won't be plastic, there won't be twist ties, there won't be rubber bands. And she said, when you do that, you really engage the people and you get their commitment to it. And when people are committed to something, obviously, they're more likely to follow and, and carry through.
Councilwoman Rowett has a comment?
Yeah, just if you're done.
Yes, I am.
Mostly just a comment. It was noted at the public hearing at our last council meeting a couple of weeks ago that you have a recycling committee of which I'm not really aware of. And, you know, they had some comments about the ordinance that we're looking to pass on solid waste. So just a comment, if your committee or your group, whatever you are, has any, you know, further comments on the ordinance, if you could direct them to your boss, Ray, or the ordinance committee, it would be much appreciated.
Okay, I will, I will let them know. We, we, we're very impromptu, and they, they call it, they, whenever I try to organize them, they call it herding cats.
And the other thing I would add with that is, it, it is not a committee, obviously committees are, especially of this type, are actually appointed by this board.
It is not a committee.
So this is not a committee.
It's a group of people who are passionate about recycling, who want to bring good ideas.
So that we can. Passionate about getting the right ordinance.
Yes. Yes, very much so.
So any comments from you or your colleague, colleagues, group members?
I will let them.
Let me know, that would be great.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments for Linda? Thank you for the update.
Thank you so much.
You're being. All right. Staying in the Public Works Division, Paul, anything to add this evening? City Court's Office, anything? Okay. Thank you. Moving into item eleven, I'll entertain a motion to consider business by a mayor and members.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Waldron. And seconded by Councilwoman Hona, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll start to my left is a Councilwoman Cavanaro.
Uh, nothing to me, Mayor, thank you.
Councilwoman Rowett?
No.
Councilwoman Menichia?
Nothing.
Councilwoman Hona?
Nothing to me.
Councilman Oliver? Anything this evening?
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilman Waldron?
Nothing for me, Mayor, thank you.
All right, I guess we're all saving it up for the budget because starting of the next meeting, actually, next Monday, we have our first joint meeting on the public safety budgets. So I greatly appreciate that. And I do also just want to extend my gratitude to you for the approval of this grant. This is the first twenty thousand dollars of the two hundred thousand dollar lead abatement program that we established with Torrington Area Health District. Just a little history, sixty-four Maplewood was on our BLIGHT list. We were pursuing this very blighted piece of property. There were fines, it ended up being sold. The city collected forty thousand dollars in BLIGHT fines against this property. So turning around and investing twenty thousand dollars to abate a lead paint and other health conditions in that building now puts two healthy units back online for tenants to move into. So, big success, and really grateful for this council's vision and recognizing these are the things we need to do. With that said, I'll move into item twelve.
I forgot one thing. The Connecticut Main Street event that, you know, happened last week was, you know, pretty complimentary to the City of Torrington and the work that our economic development director, who's Chris is not here tonight, has been to toot her horn, Mayor, and all the other people who have been, you know, connected with grants and all the opportunities that have really highlighted our Connecticut Main Street. But I was impressed with the number of people from other municipalities that were there. So interested in how Torrington was able to secure a lot of these grants and have a relationship with DEEP, and just pretty, pretty impressive. And the mayor and Rista did some walking tours. We do have some pretty incredible architecture in our downtown community, and it sort of made me proud because, you know, I was not talking with people from Torrington, I was talking with people from Southbury and from Bristol and Nagata. It was really pretty exciting to have them sort of or have Torrington highlighted in this event. So congratulations.
Yeah. I appreciate that. Actually, we were invited to meet with some legislators at the LOB tomorrow to discuss the city's use of that abandoned blighted property statute, eight dash one sixty-nine double A, I think it's the actual statute number. And that came out of that showcase, yes, last Thursday. So I appreciate your mentioning it. It was, I think, a resounding success, and Hamden's economic development person was there. Also has reached out, they'd like to meet with us again. Yeah, we don't get enough opportunities to brag about the stuff that we do. And while it may take you a very long time, it's usually worth the wait. So I appreciate that. All right, I'll move into item fourteen. I'll call a motion to open the meeting back to the public to comment on the agenda items only. Thank you, Councilwoman Menichia. And seconded by Councilwoman Hona. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to the public? Anyone from the public wishing to comment? Agenda items only. It's you, Steve. Okay. There being no further business before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, so moved.
Councilwoman Menichia, seconded by Councilman Waldron, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. I will see you all.
See you.